I wish them the best. I have things to do.
Yeah. We had, we had a blast.
You had what?
We had a blast.
I did too.
It was our penitentiary in Chicago.
The mellow kind of...
Yeah. I said I'd do it again. I may have to go to the cold rod that way. Try to search this clean out.
Could be an adventure.
Couldn't call a night's being ordered. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Burden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Danner?
Here.
Harton?
Here.
Crum? Thompson?
Here.
Night's invocation, we give it by Pastor Elizabeth Cummings for the Resurrection Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for this city and for this city council. We ask you to send your spirit to be among us this evening as we discuss the work of this city. Send your spirit and be with us. Guide us in our discussions. Help us to do your world, do your work in this world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise the heavens.
Praise the heavens. To the vibe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start tonight with presentation on approval of minutes, eight minutes of July 23rd, 2018. Mr. Custer?
I think most of you approve the minutes of July 23rd, 2018.
Second.
Most seconds, approve of the minutes, 23rd, 2018. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Upstain.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on to item number one, which is citizens to be heard. A, Lacy Schonemann. Come on, Lacy. Name and address, though, for the record, please.
Uh, Lacy Schonemann, 232 Sunset Avenue, Hayesville. I'm joining you guys again this week to discuss something I brought up three weeks ago and just wanted to kind of touch the base again concerning our current, um, police department turnover rate and who's been leaving us, why. Since being here three weeks ago, I have had numerous police officers, both present and, um, who have left, who have contacted me. So, I just want to say first of all, this isn't a witch hunt, this isn't me. I love our police force. I just want to keep who we have if they are good people. And if they're not, I want to know that they're not good people as a citizen of this town if we fired them or if they weren't good for our force or whatever that may be. Before you guys said you were going to check on numbers. Did you guys get a chance to check on any of the numbers on how many have been gone in the last year to year and a half?
We checked numbers and also, so you know, you talked about whether someone was fired or not. Personal issues, we cannot get into individual personnel issues. That's truly restricted from, from anything we can talk about.
Not why, but we're not let known if they were let go or if they chose to leave.
No, it's personnel issues we cannot get into.
But we also don't do an exit interview through HR or the department.
We can get into generalization, so you know the numbers. So, yes, we had ten officers that have left in the twelve month timeframe. There's been no one reason that they have left, though.
How do we know that if we're not doing exit interviews?
When they write a letter of resignation, they truly go through those letters of resignation with them and that truly states the reason they are leaving.
Who reviews those letters of...
Chief does.
Okay. Now, this is me here. Is that the best option for who should be doing that if somebody's leaving due to conflict with management or things that are going on, which is what I personally have heard? And like I said, I know it's hearsay at this point, but I just want the ball rolling here because we're losing these officers and if he were my boss and I had a problem with him, I don't feel like that's the appropriate person that you discuss.
If he had a problem with him, they would then go to the city administrator.
Is that known to them? Because there is no exit interview or process for them.
And officers have done exactly that.
Okay. Are we working on that? Are we going to start implementing an exit interview or some reason?
That's something we'll have to discuss.
Okay, well, when?
There isn't any timeframe for you.
Okay, so, how do we know when that happens? Do I just keep coming back and keep pressing for?
Well, you want true to get into that type situation, maybe a policy that we would develop for the full city at this point.
Okay.
Uh, we have not discussed that at all with council. We haven't discussed it with, with anyone at this point.
Okay.
As far as whether they're needed, they're wanted or not, it's not a, it's not just something...
I can tell you they're wanted. If you guys talk to the officers who've left, I have all ten of their names here and almost all of them contacted me. And were even, they even asked some of them for an exit interview and were told it was not done.
Okay.
I also wanted to bring up general conduct. I love the police officers that have done stuff for us. However, I had a couple people send me images from within the police force that I find highly offensive and like we don't care. I had numerous people tell me that at meetings it was told to them that if you don't like it here, we don't care, go on. Again, I understand that's hearsay, but it felt like through everybody who contacted me, I did not reach out to anybody. They contacted me after being here and said, "Keep barking up the street. There's problems." And then I have these pictures.
So you know, if there is, they were not discussed with any other management and they were not put into their letters of resignation.
I beg to differ. I mean, you, I don't know if you're...
I read the letters of resignation and they did not bring up any of those things and we only have...
In one case, of being unhappy with management or why they were leaving?
Correct. Why they were leaving, but not, no management problems did they bring up except for one officer.
Okay. Well, this, I don't know if I can give this to you guys or pass this. This was an image sent to me that's pretty disturbing to me where it shows, um, in a detective's office, our calendar of our police officers and almost like it's a joke that officers are leaving with graves on their pictures, end dates and a grim reaper pointing at them, which I personally find offensive.
You sure leave that for us? We'd be, we'd like to take a look at it, sure.
Because to me, that just speaks of, you're saying it's not a management thing and it's not anything like that, but when I had multiple people reference that and then when I started poking around saying, "Does anybody have a picture of this?", saying that they felt it was a joke when they left.
And it's not been brought to any of management attention at this point. When I'm saying management attention, I'm talking to the city administrator or myself.
Okay. Do you feel like people are going to do that who are trying to seek a job elsewhere when there's no exit interview or if it's a good old boys' club going on? Do you feel like people feel like it's a safe place and we're making jokes about them leaving?
I really don't have any, I have no answers for you there.
Okay, that's why I'm here, is I want to start sparking, getting these answers on why these people are leaving.
Yeah, and a lot of this is personnel issues that will not be able to be discussed with you.
Okay, but these officers are touching base with me and saying it's not...
Officers can talk to you all they want to, but we can't release, we can't release officers' personnel issues.
So, are you guys notified when a cop leaves or when it's anybody who...
No, we're not.
But are you notified when they're hired?
No, we're not.
So, how does the city say, I mean, how do people know to even come and talk to you if you're not even notified that they're leaving? How do you guys know what's happening in the schools?
Because we have, we have truly, there is a personnel policy that they truly know is there and can follow.
But how do you guys know what's going on? Who's being pulled from our schools? Who's being pulled from our streets? If we can't maintain these officers, I mean, there's so much theft and other things going on, we, we have to maintain people to be around to know what's going on and know the people and know our problems, but if you guys don't know that...
The chief and the city administrator both discuss them.
Who's the, forgive me, who's the city administrator that we're talking about?
We're black.
Okay, and so then does he come and talk to you guys?
If he feels that there's a problem, he will come and talk to me about it, yeah.
But you guys aren't notified personally of turnover rates or anything?
That's not, that's true enough council's job. Council does not hire, council does not fire. I do not hire and I do not fire.
Who hires the chief?
I appoint the chief.
Okay.
But individual employees and officers, I do not hire and do not fire.
But he's over everybody, so you hire the primary person over everybody. Is there a way that we can start finding out?
I appoint the police chief, yes.
Is there a way that we can start finding out? I mean, because I heard from officers, she said they wanted to move up and they wanted other jobs and, but extenuating circumstances within the department are reasons that they left and I understand you don't hear that. I'm asking if I bring people in here and talk to you guys, is that now acceptable since they've left the force? Is that something you guys need to hear?
If an officer wants to come in here and visit with us, he's free of his own will to do that.
There's nothing in company policy that he's not allowed to come back in and have a...
No, he can come in, just like yourself being a citizen. He is truly a citizen. He is of...
Most of them are even in Hayesville anymore.
Well, that, they still can come in as a citizen to be heard if they truly want to come in and speak to this council.
Okay. What about aftername and service law to be submitted?
We have people that live out, we have people that live outside the city that come in all the time and talk to us.
But you, you guys don't think there's a problem here that ten officers have left in a year?
No, looking at the reasons that they have left, from what their resumes are, then we have not seen one reason that is...
Have you just looked at those when I brought it up within the last three weeks, correct?
Yes, we, because they didn't see any...
But then how would you have known if there was a problem if you guys don't review these when these officers leave?
The, they check, that is not the council's job.
But you're appointing the head person over these people.
That's not the council's job to do that.
That's his job.
The administrator actually will, will visit and he will visit with me if he has a problem that he feels is there.
So...
And nothing has been brought to me.
So, have you haven't felt there was a problem there?
Based on the reasons that the employees state that they're leaving.
On paper. Did they always speak to you?
If they're truthful in why they're leaving in the letter of resignation, then how do I trust what they say if they would come in and speak to me? And they'd go to speak to me if they followed the personnel manual. No issues with that. My door's open for them.
But you guys don't feel like when there's an internal issue of management that people fear?
We have gone back, not only for this year, we did, we went back even further to look at the numbers. We only had three officers leave previously.
That's my point, so that's a huge increase.
No, it's not.
Three to ten.
It is, it's a huge increase. What I'm saying is previously, we did not, but looking at a reason, okay, that these ten officers left, there is no one reason.
So, are we poorly hiring them?
It's all over the board as to why they left.
According to paper. Are we poorly hiring them?
How, if they're not going to tell us truthfully in their, their resignation letter, then that's what we have to go by.
Okay, but we're not considering exit interviews, we're not considering, gas stations have exit interviews, so I'm really confused. Burger King has an exit interview, how a police force does not have and how our primary person in charge didn't even know last week if they charged it or three weeks ago?
And I didn't say we weren't, I did not say that we weren't, we weren't looking at doing that.
You said there's no time for...
I just said we haven't discussed at this point of doing what at this point.
How does that get discussed?
It'll be something that I decide with the, the department heads if they feel it needs to be done there or if the council would want to have it on a agenda, they can contact me to have it on an agenda.
Okay. So, nobody feels like there's anything wrong with the turnover rate that we've had in the last year? This is just hunky-dory?
Not, not from what we have, we have seen, from what, from what they've said. They, there, it's a personnel issue, so...
So, just yourself and the chief?
Myself, the administrator and the chief have reviewed those, yes.
Okay. That's, that's really disheartening. Also, the city site hasn't been updated? Officer Jax is still listed on there. He was last week. I have printouts of it. Last week, Jax, everybody was still listed on there who are the, some of the ten who have been gone. That's stuff that should be updated. I see you guys updated the Facebook page and everything, but we don't know when they leave because they're not even taken off online. They're not taken off the personnel list. That's not even done? Jax has been gone for months. When do the citizens get to know who leaves and who stays? Not reasons, just asking. When do we get to know, hey, is there, can we come in there and ask for a roster of who works and who doesn't work?
We don't, it's, it's something true that we don't get into personnel issues of publishing, no. We do not.
It's not a personnel issue, it's who's serving our community.
It is a personnel issue when someone leaves the department or...
Can we just update who works for the department?
And I'm not talking only the police department. We have all, employees all over that leave, but not only the police department.
Okay. Can we at least update and have a list of who is currently employed? Does citizens...
That's something you can truly request, yes.
I would like to formally request that.
You have to fill out the paperwork and send, give it to us and we can give that to you. There is a, there is through state law...
So, I have to fill it out each month if I want to copy a few workforce?
What you have, what you have to do to fill out, to get those records. And if you fill out the paperwork, then you can get the records.
And it's, how often is that reviewed and renewed?
How, and what review?
How, who's employed? Like, is that something I can apply for each month and fill out before?
You can, you can fill one out as many times as you want to.
But nobody here has any issues currently with the turnover rate or anything that's going on with how many officers we left, especially within our schools. And I personally know a couple of them and I understand some left for reasons of personal, pursuing things outside the field, but all but two of the ten officers stayed within the field and went to other counties. Did you disagree?
It's on the website, I don't know what you're talking about.
Last week, when we went through the personnel things, Jax was still listed. I'll bring the pictures because I printed them off too. Jax was listed, everybody was. Because when I went through to try and figure out who was there and who wasn't, everybody was still listed as still there for... And the, the full roster isn't online, obviously, it's just certain people. I guess I'm just disappointed that nobody finds it an issue, even if you say there's many reasons, three to ten is a large jump for a department far later.
And I, and we agree with that, yes. That's truly why...
I would like to submit these for you guys to look at because this truly is disgusting.
Submit it through the, uh, city administrator.
foul play as far as what's being allowed and it's out in the open, so I'm confident many people have seen it.
We'd like to review it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to our next item, which is item two, approval license and bonds. A, retail liquor license renewal regarding Hersch Liquor, 7127 South Broadway. Mr. Custer?
I think most of you renew Hersch Liquor at 7127 South Broadway.
Second.
Most second to renew the liquor license for Hersch Liquor. Discussion, question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on to item three, introduction ordinance and resolutions. A, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation bond series 2018. The city of Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax with purpose of paying principal of and interest on said bonds that become due, authorizing certain other documents in action in connection therewith and making certain covenants with respect thereto. Any breath left after that?
All right. The next one we're going to cut down a little bit.
Just a little bit. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council of Druck Showgren, George K. Harmon and Company, financial advisor to the city. Passing around three sets of papers that we're going to look at tonight. At a previous meeting, you adopted a resolution scheduling the bond sale for today, August 13th, 2018, opening bids at 11:00 a.m. This morning, we opened the bids and received four responses, and I will refer to the bid tab on the sheet with the four responses on it. The worst bid was from DA Davidson at a true interest cost of 3.493595%. Next best bid was UMB Bank with a true interest cost or a tick of 3.436369%. Next was Commerce Bank with a tick of 3.420937. And the best and winning bid was from Cooper Malone, McLean Incorporated here in Wichita at a tick of 3.224926%. I've also passed around a updated spreadsheet on the legal, on the legal sheet, size sheet here, with results from the bond sale and the, the amounts of yearly specials payments that are required to service the debt. You might notice that there are some irregular payments on there and that indicates that a property owner has either prepaid the whole amount or prepaid a portion of the assessment amount within Orchard Acres or Dirk Street. In Orchard Acres, there were two lots, two specials that were prepaid in full and one that was prepaid roughly half of the assessment. And in Dirk Street, there were one property owner who paid, who prepaid the specials in full. And the other smaller sheet is just a summary. I think I probably passed this around at the beginning when you authorized the projects. I've updated it for the project costs and it lists the, total project cost of each lot for each Dirk Street and Orchard Acres. I note that both yearly average yearly specials payment amounts are lower than we estimated back in February of 17, when, that's when the projects were petitioned and authorized. And I, I stand for any questions you might have about these three sheets I've passed around. There are also three actions for consideration tonight. I'd answer questions before I go over the action items, if you have any. And if not, I can go over the action items and if you think of something, I can answer it after that. The first one is a, we need a motion second and a vote to accept Cooper Malone's, Cooper Malone, McLean's bid with the true interest cost of 3.224926%. A second one is a motion second and vote to pass the bond issuance ordinance. And third is to motion second and pass the bond issuance resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
I would move that we accept Cooper Malone's bid at a true interest cost of 3.224926%.
Second.
Most second to accept Cooper Malone's bid as presented. Question, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move to item B, which is a resolution and the same series bonds, authorizing, this is on the other section basically of that we had released. One was Dirk Street and one was the other one there. Item B basically says the same thing, it's just two different components. May want to make a motion now. Mr. Custer?
So, it'd be the same thing with Cooper Malone?
Item B is also Cooper Malone, Malone's question, yes.
Yes, yeah, it's one, one series of bonds that service both.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to accept Cooper Malone's bid for the true interest, interest cost of 3.224926%. Second.
Most second to accept the bid of Cooper Malone as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item, item C, though, is a resolution determining the advisability of improvements. And this is for the findings and providing for the paving and drainage improvements of Timber Creek, page two. I would have gone to C, we already did A and B.
Well, the ordinance passed and...
There is no ordinance that, with the resolution we passed and the ordinance we already passed.
The way that I understood it, Mayor, was that we needed to accept their bid, which is what Danner and Harton did. And then, Mr. Shogren, it sounded like you said that we needed to pass the ordinance next and then pass the resolution.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah. It really should have been done all in one as far as that part of you, of not even accepting the bid at this point, so next time, we'll make sure that it's there as a action item to accept the bid, not just the ordinance is there, because that truly needs to be a separate action item for this council to deal with that needs to be on the agenda.
Yes. Will do, Mr. Mayor.
So, now we're going to then go back to item A, which is the ordinance that I read earlier. Ms. Harton?
I make a motion to accept the ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of the general obligation bonds as presented. Second.
Most second to approve the ordinance as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And item B is the resolution that needs to be passed also on these bonds. Mr. Custer?
I think most of you pass the resolution as presented before.
Second.
Most second to approve the passage resolution as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Now, item C is the Timber Creek paving and drainage resolution as presented.
C is for Timber Creek.
Timber Creek.
Timber Creek for paving and drainage resolution, page two. Mr. Mayor?
I make a motion that we pass the resolution for paving and drainage improvements for Timber Creek Estates, page, page two.
Second.
Most second to pass the resolution on Timber Creek's paving and drainage as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Danner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And D is a resolution for the sanitary sewer improvements in Timber Creek Estates, page two. Mr. Custer?
I think most of you pass a resolution for the sewer improvements for Timber Creek Estates, page two.
Second.
Most second to pass the resolution for sanitary sewer improvements, Timber Creek Estates. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?[1544.22] Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D is a resolution for the water distribution line for Timber Creek Estates, page two. Mr. Mayor?
I'd make a motion that we pass the resolution for the water distribution line improvements in Timber Creek Estates, page two.
Second.
Vote second to pass the water distribution line to Timber Creek Estates, page two, as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That will do item four, no communications, AA governing body announcements. Anyone else have announcements? Mr. Crumslot here. So I do have the Senior Center announcements, which are August 15th. They've got a back-to-school bingo. Remember, they'll bring school supplies for your US-261 bingo fee. August 11th, we have a mystery luncheon. August 22nd, they have a movie at the Senior Center. August 25th, they have a friends and family breakfast. August 27th, they have Cooking with Kim. And then, they have a chair yoga on Monday mornings, and they've had 17 people turn out for that class. And they had an annual bake sale that raised over $300 this last week. So, Senior Center is very active at this point. Any other announcements council would like to make? No, we'll move to item D. New businesses memo. We have several new businesses with us. And we have one of the owners of the new business that is here, which is the O6O Sports. And you're, you're sure welcome to come up and, and address council on this new business that you got there.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Brown, one of the owners of O6O Sports, and I brought flyers, so I just, okay. Brought flyers for everyone. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just wanted to announce that we are having our ribbon cutting this Friday at noon for the Hayesville Chamber of Commerce. You guys are all welcome. We'd love to see you there. You're, um, basically, you can just come around, take a look, it looks a lot different. So we'd love to have you there. We did just change our hours starting today, because everybody's going back to school. So we'll only be open in the evenings and on the weekends now. We have been running a special all, the entire month of August for 15% off. And we just had our back-to-school batch this past weekend, which was, I would say it was successful, which was nice. We are now offering personal training sessions for pitching and batting for softball and baseball. And we also have a soccer player that's going to come in and do goalie sessions. And we just got our 5,000 flyers that are going to be distributed. We've got our solicitor's license here in Hayesville, as well as Wichita. And so we will be getting those distributed, and then hopefully, that will bring in more business. Is there any questions for me?
Does anyone go out to your escape room, Sharon?
We did have some experts give us our escape room. You know, that's, was new to us, too. So we've had a couple little hiccups over the last week, but we've, you know, I've only heard good feedback, so pretty excited about that.
Yeah, by attending, you have some of the ones that own other escape rooms that were there to try them out, I guess.
Correct, yeah, they came in and we didn't even know, except for the car in the parking lot had their name all over it. But they did talk to us afterwards and gave us really good feedback as well. Any other questions?
Questions or statements, council?
Welcome down.
Thank you.
Can old people come and play the zooka ball?
Yes, please come and play. Janie's husband would, and he is in love with the zooka ball, I think.
He had a great time.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to play the zooka?
Sure.
I'll meet you there or something.
Mr. Mayor, you also have Mr. Hannah, she's one of the new business owners.
Yes. Mr. Hannah, please come forward.
I just found out about this today, because I was on vacation last week, and my partner said, hey, there's an email. So, um, yes, so for Ark Valley Aero, a new structural aircraft machine shop. New to Hayesville, love it. We're learning. I grew up, well, in Derby, you know, the other side of town. No, we, so, everybody here has been very good to us. I mean, uh, the people that come out and help go through the building and check it out. I mean, everybody's been really good to us, so we're growing quickly, everything's going very well, so.
You might just let them know exactly what, uh, Aero, Ark Valley Aero really does, so they would...
It's, uh, so, we make structural components for aircraft. So I don't care whether it's a business jet, a 737, Boeing, um, we're doing large components. So our smallest machine is 60 inches in travel, and we're going to do some parts that are going to be up to 10. Well, we did, we did some 23-foot-long parts here a couple of weeks ago, so we're, we're going to do, we're going big or going home, so we're going to try it.
I think you, three employees do you have?
Right now, we have six.
Six, okay.
And probably going to need a few more here soon, so.
We hope so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There were two other businesses listed, the BOE and DT LLC, which is the non-destructive testing services. And J and R Services, which is a property preservation service also. We'll then go on to next item, which is the memo regarding counsel from a door-to-door license that was, that was presented to, um, oh, O6O Sports had a, how shall I add a, a, a door-to-door license at that point? Next item, then, is item D, which is a thank-you note and photos from the Summer Spark Program, the city-centric field trip. Item five, old business, we have nothing. Item six, are the business, a presentation of the Meridian Pedestrian Bridge Project. We have Chris Umpchurch with us, who is with WAMPOE, Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is the regional transportation planning entity. We do transportation planning for the Wichita region. We do a long-range plan going out about 20 years. We are also in charge of distributing federal transportation funds to jurisdictions in this region. We give out about $12 million a year of those funds. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the Meridian Pedestrian Bridge Project. This would be a pedestrian bridge over the Wichita Valley Center floodway adjacent to Meridian Avenue. Now, this project has been around a while. When Meridian was converted from two lanes to four several years ago, Cedric County squeezed all four of those lanes onto the existing bridge. And that did not leave any shoulder, no pedestrian facilities. It's difficult for bicyclists, and I'd say kind of hostile for pedestrians to try and get across that. Several years back, Cedric County proposed a pedestrian bridge adjacent to Meridian Avenue. And WAMPOE did fund that for construction in 2017, but the bids came in very high, and Cedric County, which would have been responsible for the extra cost, decided to pull the project instead. They did come back to us this year, asking for money again in 2021, so this project is something that could happen several years down the line. But WAMPOE does sometimes have extra money available at the end of the year, money that was not used for other projects that were planned. And this is a bit tricky to dispose of, because we usually, it, it takes time to develop these major capital projects. So we usually give this money to, uh, planning projects, like the Planning Walkable Places Program, which you here in Hayesville are participating in. And to technology projects, we're doing one on K-15 right now, for example. But because this pedestrian bridge project had gotten so close to getting built a year ago, it could actually be ready much quicker than the usual major capital project. So Cedric County has suggested that we use some of our end-of-the-year funds for this project. And this project, when we asked for public comment on it, it has been very well received. We got more public comments on this than on any other project that we are considering for '21 or '22. My colleague Tricia Thomas was down here for your National Night Out event, and you can see all the orange markers there, people supporting this project. So because so many people are interested in it, and because it could be a use of our end-of-the-year funds, the WAMPOE Transportation Policy Body will be considering this at their meeting tomorrow, whether to allocate funding to this project that would allow it to get started, probably physical construction started later this year or next year, rather than waiting until 2021. So I'm out here to let you guys know about this and to ask for any public comment from you or from, from members of the public on this project that I can take back to the policy body for their meeting tomorrow.
Let's, council, anything they'd like to say? Mr. Kessler?
I'd definitely like to say I'm, uh, definitely for it, because I've heard a lot of people wanting this project, and I'm concerned you have to, with all the input that people have given you, so this is definitely needed, definitely wanted.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'd true, I'd too agree that it's something that is long, long overdue. I hate to say it, but sometimes Hayesville gets, uh, gets pushed to the back burner, and I, I think this is a good step forward for the county and the city of Hayesville, to step forward and do the project.
I think, uh, it goes, Mr. Mayor?
I, I can't say much more than reiterate what's already been said. I know you got a lot of comments on the web about it, but that would be, it'd be such a great thing if we could open up that bottleneck for pedestrians and bicyclists, especially there in the vicinity of the school. I can't think of anything bad about that, that could be a great project to do.
One thing I think we might want to do, so that Chris can truly get feedback, I know the feedback will be given to, to the TPP tomorrow, basically at 3:00, to add this to the, as an amendment to the 2018 tip, is what we'll be doing tomorrow. And I would sure think it would be nice for someone to make a motion and, and to, um, uh, support that for the TPP, although we know that we're all too there, and he can take that back and report that to them as far as what we would do as far as any motion to, um, support anything that the TPP would maybe wanting to do at this point. The TAC, there is also a group called the Technical Advisory Committee, which Zach sits on that committee that met and have all passed this, and they're sent, and that's why it's being sent to the TPP, which is the large board of each and every city out there. There's about 20, some of us, on that board?
Yep, about that.
That truly make the decisions, final decisions on putting this on the amendments at this point. So I think it'd be good to see all the other cities to know that we truly are heavily supporting this with this true motion to go back and beginning to report that to, to the TPP tomorrow. Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion, uh, providing our support to the TPP, uh, Transportation Policy Body, uh, of our support for this pedestrian bridge across Meridian, our long, we're going...
Second.
Vote second to, uh, pass the, um, approval for wanting the, uh, the bridge to be funded in the 2018. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Now, I'm going to kind of spring something on you, so that also, in, in looking at this, I know there's always money that we've talked about previously, and I'm not asking for anyone to give an amount, but I would think that also carry weight if we would say that we may be interested in putting funds towards this along with the county at this point. We have no idea what the amount would be, but I think truly making a motion that we would be interested in helping to fund would also go a long ways, too, at this point. Mr. Reddick?
I'd make a motion that we, um, throw our support financially for this project, along with the county.
Second.
Vote second to, uh, let them know that we would be financially in favor of helping to support. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anything else, Chris, that I may want to get into, or?
That's all I have, thank you very much for your feedback.
Very good, thank you. We're now going to then go to item B, which is the public hearing for in consideration of approval of the proposed 2019 budget. So with that, I would take a motion to open the public hearing for the 2019 budget. Ms. Parton?
I'd make a motion we open the budget hearing for the 2019 budget.
Second.
Vote second to open the public hearing for 2019 budget. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We're now formally open for the public hearing of 2019 budget. Any members of the audience wish to speak for or against the proposed budget? Seeing none, if there are no other members of the audience wishing to speak, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
I'd make a motion that we close the public portion of the hearing for the 2019 budget.
Second.
Vote second to close the public hearing for the 2019 budget. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
The item is now open for discussion from the council or a motion to, um, the 2019 budget. As for approval for, we already have published at this point, so this truly is the approval of what you've been given for the budget itself. Ms. Parton?
I'd make a motion we accept the 2019 budget.
Second.
Vote second to accept the 2019 budget. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Lead item C, which is consideration agreement with PEC for design services for the Timber Creek Estates, page two. You've got before you that contract, uh, which goes along with the resolutions that you did earlier for Timber Creek. As you can see, what they've proposed is a total of $72,400 for paving, drainage, sanitary sewer, and water distribution at this point. Total lump sum fee, though, they say, is, uh, 87,100. It arrives as follows. You've got the, you've got the other paving, drainage administration, the sanitary sewer and water distribution at this point. This is the 14,700, both of them add up to the 81,200, 87,100, excuse me. What council would like to do with PEC's contract? Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion we approve the agreement with PEC for the design services for Timber Creek Estates, page two.
Second.
Vote second to approve the agreement with PEC for Timber Creek Estates, page two. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, consideration playground equipment and installation, Georgie.
And the mayor and council, so at the last couple park board meetings, we have been discussing the park area that was going to go in west of the sand volleyball courts over by the new activity center. They did approve to spend up to $97,030 on the playground equipment. You'll have in your packet, there should be pictures of the equipment that we're looking at going there. There on the screen, maybe not. This does have one main play structure, and then several other pieces that go around it. This park will be able to handle 30 kids at once. We went for something that was high-traffic, that's going to make that, really finalize that area, make it look really nice. The land, it's a landscape structure equipment, which there is some similar, Madison Park over in Derby, Cedric County Park, there's one up in north, Dr. Glenville Park is also, it's just a different type of playground equipment. And this includes, and, equipment, installation, drainage, mulch, lighting, we're going to put additional light on the sand volleyball courts. And then concrete for the canopies, sidewalk to connect those, and kind of finalize that. So can try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, council? Mr. Kessler?
What, uh, what age group was this park for?
So this one's five-year-olds to 12-year-olds.
Five and 12.
Yeah, but it does have, I mean, several features there. It has the spin cups, it has the, or swing, a small circler that spins, the stand-up teeter-totter, and then rope climbing and the slides on there, so it does have quite a bit.
Mr. Thompson?
It looks like it's, um, missing my favorite equipment. Where's the benches?
The benches?
Yeah.
Um, so with the canopies, I don't have the canopy shown on the area there. We've got to figure out some drainage issue and just the layout where we're going to put those at, but we'll putting, be putting benches out of there like we have over at the sand volleyball courts. We'll be coming back with, looking at irrigating that area and reseating it, that whole area inside of the concrete there to kind of finish it off. We'll be doing that after we get this installed and figure out where we do everything. So looking at first week of October to start installation, weather permitting, hoping to be done by Fall Festival. I don't know if the benches will be there right in. So, um, looking for approval for that $97,030, unless you guys have more questions.
Ms. Parton?
I'd make a motion we allow the park board to spend up to 97,030 with ATCO to put in parlay ground equipment over by the sand volleyball courts.
Second.
Vote second to approve the 97,030 as presented to the council for the park equipment and mulch lighting, draining as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lead item D, which is the consideration temporary special events application for consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property.
This first one is for an event at the Lions Club Shelter. The event will be contained inside the Lions Club Shelter, and it's for a birthday party.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd make a motion that we approve the special events permit for Lions Club Shelter on 8/25/18.
Second.
Vote second to approve the temporary event with consumption of alcohol in Lions Club Shelter. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item M is consideration temporary, uh, special events application for consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property.
And this one is for a bridal shower at the activity center in the rental room, which is labeled Activity Room on the attached map on September 15th.
Mr. Kessler?
I'd make a motion we approve the special event application as presented.
Second.
Vote second to approve the special event application as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Lead item seven, department records, A, administrative services, well.
Zach Weaver next to Cruisin' on Saturday, August 25th, do you have anything to add as far as the events?
No, uh, that, that's it, yeah.
That's it?
Hope to see you out there, it was great last month, uh, we had a lot of people out, and that's part of that, so, good event, hopefully we'll have a food truck this half. It was still great, no, a lot of people.
What time's it start?
Um, we, we pushed it back an hour to 10:00. Um, we, we pushed the start time back to 6:00, but most people are still coming around 4:00 or 5:00 anyways, it's a Cruisin', so we're really not, we're not pushing people away, let's put it that way, so.
Well, if they have a car they want to show, or just come by, just to show up?
Yep, and we're, we're going to do something a little different with the parking to allow for more stalls, uh, well, I'll discuss that with you later, but, um, it's, uh, it was, it was quite... Well, I'll discuss that with you later, but it's, it was, it was quite the event. We're happy with the turnout, very pleased.
Item B, Janey, City Clerk, Janey? Item C, Police Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our visiting officer this evening is Sergeant Randy Novak. He is our Canaan Officer. Rocks is also back there, I guess, if he thought I was going to forget it. Your Canaan Officer with rocks. He's currently working the swing shift, so he's working all three shifts and, and doing a good job, so say hi to him when you go out there. Also, just want to remind everybody that school does start later this week, so please be mindful of the speed limits in the school zones and around the schools. All residential streets are twenty miles an hour, so need to make sure we're observing that, especially around the schools, because we'll have lots of kids out and some may be walking to school for the first time, so need to be mindful of that. And I wanted to thank everybody that helped with and came out for the National Night Out. We had some pretty good weather that evening. It was a little bit warm, but we can't have everything, so the rain stayed away. I had about three hundred people that came out, so just want to say thanks to everybody that came out, and hope everybody had a good time. That's all we got, thanks. Department of Parks, Tony?
And Recreation, Georgie.
I have a couple announcements. This Friday night, we will have our monthly movie night. We will be showing Shark Tale over at the outdoor pool. Kind of some different requirements for this. You can look on the website or call for more information, but it will start at eight-twenty. They do have to be ten years old to go by themselves. On Sunday, it will be Dog Day at the pool, so that will be from one to two-thirty. It's five dollars per dog, and bring the dogs over and let them swim in the pool. Lastly, we're still taking registrations for youth soccer for this fall, and then tiny tot soccer, which is a four-week clinical, so. And then all that information is on the webpage, or you can call the activity center. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgie. Item A, appointments. We've had some people leave the library board, and they have a re, new appointments for us. Item A, which is Clyde of Fall, twenty-seven, twelve, seventeen, Loring Street, appointment to the library board. This is a, filling a remainder of a term. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we're allowing to appoint Clyde of Fall, twelve-seventeen, Loring Street, to the remaining term of the library board.
Second?
Most second to approve the appointment of Clyde of Fall. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Dinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Item B is Barb Walters of seven-twenty-eight Chatta Street. This is an appointment to the library board for a two-year term. Ms. Parton?
Make a motion, we allow the mayor to appoint Barb Walters of seven-twenty-eight Chatta Street for a two-year term on the library board.
Second?
Most second to approve the appointment of Barb Walters for a two-year term. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Janey.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Dinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item nine, opportunity to citizens to be heard. Anyone that would like to speak to council, now is the time. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll go to executive, item ten, executive session. We have none. Item eleven, bills be paid. A, bills be paid the first half of August. Is Ewer?
Like to make a motion to repay the first half of the August bills.
Second?
Most second to pay the first half of August bills. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Dinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Item twelve, consent agenda, we have nothing. Item thirteen, council items, A, council concerns. Ms. Counsel? Ms. Redden?
It's not necessarily a concern, I just want, our officer, Novak, was here. There was a pretty good write-up and on the news and stuff about Randy stepping up and buying motel room for a family that was in the motel parking lot, or in the gas station parking lot, and I just like to say that I think that speaks highly of our police department, that our officers go above and beyond to help the citizens, so. Just want to put my two cents where.
You have concerns, counsel? Or statements, or anything you'd like to say? Mr. Kessler?
You mentioned, I think a couple weeks ago, that if you want to investigate having the staff check out the scores of voting, or, you know, the election signs, just bringing them back up.
We haven't looked any further at this point. Didn't seem to be a big problem on this election we had, so we haven't discussed it more at this point.
I know, you know, Wichita has her like forty-some, forty-some days out, and, you know, like I mentioned last time, you know, ours are fourteen, and people are voting